All right. It is 6:01. Call the meeting of the February 1st Planning Board Meeting to order. I'm Stephanie Slush. I'm your chair. And to my right, I have Jimmy Tarr, alternate chair. To my left, I have Lee Bell. We have Mike Pashek, board member, joining virtually. Mike, if you could just state your name and that you're here for the-
Mike Pashek.
Great, thank you. Like I said, we're waiting for one more member, John Jeffress, who should be joining us at some point.
Downstairs.
Downstairs. Sorry, there's another meeting going on downstairs and people are coming in and out. And then we have Gerard Brino, our administrative assistant over at the end here. Oh, and here we have John Jeffress, our fifth Planning Board member.
Perfect timing.
So first item on the agenda, as always, is public forum. This is opportunity for anyone who's here virtually or in person to speak to something that is not on the agenda tonight. So this is an opportunity for you to bring forth or talk about, ask questions, or bring forth something to the board's attention that is not on the agenda. So if you're here for something on our agenda, then that's great. Is there anyone here? Mickey, are you trying to speak? Okay, she just muted herself. All right, if there's not anyone here for public forum, we can close public forum and move to our first discussion item, which is with Jeff Brusco, talking about a potential zone change at 108 West Street. Is Jeff here? If he happens to come back in, we can make time for him. So I guess we'll go to the next agenda item. Discussion with Ashley Schaefer about a potential zone change at 121 West Street. Do you mind just both of you just moving to the chair in front of the microphone? So this discussion came on the heels before our January 15th deadline, really, to get on the town meeting warrant agenda. So there's a deadline to get on the town meeting warrant. Any sort of zoning change that happens or change to our bylaws has to be put forth town meeting. And so just happened to be, timing-wise, you reached out looking at potentially, you've reached out to say you're interested in putting a pickleball in our tennis facility at 121 West Street. However, the zoning doesn't allow for that, isn't in a light industrial zone. And then there was kind of a conversation about what the ask is, what the ask will be at town meeting for a potential zone change, not necessarily to make the project work for you, but what makes sense to the town in changing and looking at our zoning bylaws. Right, so if you'd like to talk a little bit about what you're asking for the town to consider with the zone changing, and then this is an informal discussion ahead of a public hearing, that would be for March 1st. So opportunity to ask us questions and stuff that we would like to see in any sort of presentation that'll happen at March 1st. And then March 1st with the public hearing, that'll give the opportunity for the public to give comment in support of or opposition to the project as well. And a butters will be notified and that kind of thing. So that's a little bit of the history of that. But yes, please tell us a little bit about your, although we think everyone, the public, is interested in hearing your eventual plans for the parcel. This is also going to be about just the zoning that we're going to be voting on and changing. So we want to talk a little bit about the project, but then focus mostly on like what we're looking at, voting on at town meeting, what the ask is there.
Okay, so we're specifically asking for an amendment to the bylaws to allow for recreational facility use.
In light industrial zone.
In light industrial.
Are you looking to put up a structure?
Yes. Yeah, because in our table of use, there's kind of like, there's three different recreation facilities that are in our table of use. One is a municipal park, playground, and then nonprofit recreational facilities. And that's allowed with a special permit in all of our zoning bylaws. I think the reasoning behind that is mostly if the town wanted to take some land and make a park, that's more of the gist for that. Then there's amusement or recreation service, including batting cages, miniature golf, and related activities, not including golf courses. And there's also commercial recreation use, including campgrounds, outdoor athletic facilities, or similar activities. So based on what you're looking-
Yeah, it didn't seem to fall under any of that.
Yeah, I'd say it would probably best fit in something like amusement or recreation service. It seems more like a batting cage or something more along those lines.
I agree, yeah.
However, again, like that's not allowed in a light industrial zone. It's only allowed in town's business center or in a business zone. Like I imagine indoor carting is probably a bit falls under this category and I know that that's a business zone. So yeah, the question, I think that's probably where it would fit. I don't know if the board, what the board thinks about that, how they feel about amending our table of use to-
What was the third one, Steph?
It was for more outdoor, commercial recreation use, including campground, outdoor athletic facilities, or similar activities. So with that, you would probably be coming in and asking, because like really, I'm thinking too, like, I'm trying to understand the reasoning why something like that wouldn't be allowed in a light industrial zone, because a lot of those complexes, if you're making them indoor, would have probably like a warehouse-type structure that would look kind of like what you-
That was what we were wondering.
A building in a light industrial zone.
Any reason why they're excluded.
Yeah, I'm sure like back when we did this zoning, there was, you know, an idea to have more light industrial uses being put in this particular swath. That's really most of like 5 and 10 is, like, most of what light industrial land is, is mostly on 5 and 10. So yeah, sometimes I am befuddled too by our zoning bylaws, but you know, that's what we're beholden to legally. So that would probably be, I don't know, the request. And is there any sort of things that we would want to see as a board with a public hearing presentation on them next month related to this request?
I think heading to the change of use is better than spot zoning.
Right, that's a lot of potential. Yeah, because that was the other option is like, oh, we could like ask to change the zoning on that just one particular parcel to the use that is allowed currently, which would be business probably. But there's a lot of, you know, that'll, could you open us up to legal challenges with spot zoning? So I feel like this is probably the better way to go is updating our zoning table of use. I would like to see like maybe what other towns are allowing around, if they allow more recreation and amusement things in light industrial or industrial zones.
Some do, I have a list.
You do? Yeah, ready for next meeting, yeah. I'm trying to think, is there other things that come to mind when you're thinking you'd want to consider for this?
Well, there's also, what's he looking for on 108 West Street?
Right in prison.
Okay.
Okay, we'll get to him after.
Yeah, well, yeah, what I'm thinking is that we have two parcels sort of right near each other.
Yeah, different, yeah, different things happen in there. But yeah, this just happens to be two things happening on West Street that we have on the agenda today. Yeah, so I guess it would be coming in and making the case why it would be best, you know, for Hatfield to, and us as a board, to be supportive of adding 4.22 in our zoning bylaws, which is amusement or recreation service, including batting cages, miniature golf, and related activities, not including golf courses, adding light industrial to that.
My family operated a riding stable on both sides of West Street once upon a time. That was what could be considered amusement, entertainment. People were there for recreation, get on a horse and go up on the mountain. As a matter of fact, I spoke to, wow, they moved hard a couple of days ago, who was like on a butter. Their family had their own baseball diamond on Route 5. Bob does crew, he coaches crew. And I mentioned to him that you folks wanted to do pickleball. And he's been teaching pickleball for 20 years. You'll have his endorsement.
Well, that sounds wonderful.
He'll be your number one fan.
Okay.
Thanks for the good news.
Sure.
Thanks for the work.
I know him very well.
Great. Yeah, and I would say too, I know that there's, pickleball is a thing too. Or I mean, I know this, we're not necessarily talking about the particular project that would go in, because we would need to pass this change at town meeting before, you know, anybody, the project itself would come before the board and the town. You know, but I also, you know, it's a thing that's, everybody's interested in town about trying to find a space. I know it's across the country, it's really popular. But I also know that there's concerns with people putting these pickleball facilities in residential areas, because apparently it is kind of loud, it is a loud sport. I didn't know that. I was reading articles about people in the Cape in particular, are, you know, are talking about having issues with noise and stuff, so.
Yeah, there's currently a discussion downstairs going on about a pickleball.
Pickleball in the recreation committee.
In town. And my thought is that that's, that the whole thing's a great idea, especially given the proposal by Steibel just up the street with the disc golf that they're thinking about putting in next to their warehouse there. I mean, I think we should find a way to try to make it work. I'm not sure how that's going to happen, but let's do it.
Yeah, because then what would go happen is there would be, you know, you would present this to at the March 1st meeting. We would then vote, generally in the past when people have brought zoning changes, we have generally moved them on to town meeting. It just is whether we vote to endorse them, to remain neutral, or to not recommend that, even though we send it to town meeting. So that's kind of what we will be voting on as a board next, at the next meeting in March. And then that'll go before town meeting. You'd have to get the townspeople there to support that change. And then we would go from there with any sort of actual project that would be proposed for that parcel. But do you have any other questions? Do you need any other information before next meeting?
So all I heard that you definitely want to see is you want to know about the size?
I don't, I don't think actually we would probably need to know the size, John, for, that would be like the next step about what the actual project would be, right?
It would be nice to see a general, just a sketch even, of what you had in mind.
But that wouldn't necessarily weigh, or shouldn't weigh-
Right, right, that would just be for our information.
Yeah, like what could be coming down the pike.
Right.
Kind of like Siebel Altron came in for an informal conversation. That's two parcels south, two parts, yeah, of the one that you're looking at to kind of say like this is coming, but gave like a very broad brush stroke of what they plan to be doing with that parcel, which includes a large warehouse-type building with some of the land used for dog park and/or disc golf and like hiking trails, so something.
Interesting.
The recreation piece is, would be like an accessory use to the warehouse, which is probably why it would be more allowed in that zone. But just knowing that that's also something that could be coming in the neighborhood as well. Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
All right, all right.
So we don't, aren't going to discuss what kind of structure it is that's the March 1st.
So March, so we won't even discuss what kind of structure it is after, till after town meeting? Because really, the parcel isn't zoned in a way that would allow for this type of structure, right? Or this type of business to operate right now of what they're proposing. So we would have to vote on town meeting to make the change in our zoning, which would allow for recreation uses in a light industrial zone, or these type of amusement and recreation uses. And then that would have to pass town meeting. And then, you know, it takes a month or two for the attorney general to pass. So basically, the zoning bylaw wouldn't even be in effect, the change, until the new fiscal year. And then from there, we would then have, we'll go through the whole special permit process for whatever they decided to-
What was the March 1st meeting you're talking about?
So the March 1st meeting is a public hearing that would be notified to, you know, the public, where people could come and speak in support or in opposition of updating our table of use and our zoning bylaws that would make this parcel eligible for what they want to do, but also make all light industrial parcels eligible for amusement and recreation service businesses. Thank you for making, I thought I was being clear, but you know, it's a lot of wonky stuff, so I appreciate you asking my question to make sure we can clarify that. Any other questions from the board, comments from the board on this?
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll see you March 1st. And that'll be more of a, yeah, presentation on the, not the project, but on changing the table of use. Cool, thank you. I see we have you here now, Mr. Brusco. If you'd like to come to take a seat in front of Mike, we can work on your agenda item. All right. Good evening. So also happened, oh yeah, we have to have you sign in if you haven't signed in yet.
And there's one right there, thank you.
Thank you. Another person who came in, but right before our January 15th deadline to get any items on the town meeting warrant agenda is Mr. Brusco, who reached out about wanting to start a doggy daycare potentially at his property at 108 West Street. That property is currently zoned rural residential.
Slash cafe.
Oh, slash cafe. That parcel is currently zoned rural residential. And although we do allow cafes and restaurants in rural residential zones, doggy daycare, as you can imagine, with a table of use that's kind of old, it doesn't squarely fit necessarily into a table of use. But looking at what other towns have done, they've kind of named it as kind of more of a kennel facility, which again is not, that wouldn't be allowed in a rural residential zone. So Mr. Brusco was wondering about what we, what options were to change the zoning in his parcel, which I was here today for a conversation before any potential public hearing on that, to kind of hear what we would think about that. Yeah, so if you would like to explain a little bit about why you're interested in changing the zoning for the parcel and why that would be in particular interest of the town, that would be great.
Well, I had a young man working for me about five or six years ago, and he needed to take a week off so that he could babysit the dogs for a friend of his. And I was like, there's got to be, couldn't your, I needed his assistance. And I'm like, couldn't you send the animals to, you know, a doggy daycare facility? And I think the only one available at that time was the Hadley Hotel. And, you know, I've had animals all my life. And as I mentioned earlier, we had a riding stable on that particular parcel, 108 West Street. My father raised registered Morgans. The barn held 12 box stalls in the backyard. We had three paddocks for the horses. And I felt the need. And there are, you know, my gal, she has been sending, or well, we lost Roscoe last year, but she was sending Roscoe to a doggy daycare twice a week, just so he could have some social interaction. And anyway, my property has been idle. So I was looking to put in doggy daycare. And simultaneously, I'm thinking, you're dropping your dog off, this is the time, you know, there are two exits from Hatfield. Elm Street down by Sunoco, the corner of West and Chestnut. You drop your dog off, you get yourself a latte. I have two separate buildings there, so yeah, it would be housed in two separate buildings. I still like the idea of, you know, coffee and crumpets in the morning. If you can have your dog taken care of, that's good too. But also, as with any business, sometimes they don't make it. So what I would like to do is, you know, have the cafe, have the doggy daycare, and if that is allowed, still working on having it zoned so that it is a business area, so that, you know, if an accountant, or a tanning salon, or a lawyer, or a doctor, or whomever, wanted to put in an office, you know, and operate a business off of West Street, they could do that. Benefits, we're a better community. We need our, you know, and childcare is allowed in what is currently, you know, my zoning. There are more pets than children right now. They need to be taken care of.
People treat their pets like children.
Yes. There are bakeries that are totally focused on our pets. So come and get a coffee and get a treat for your pet.
So yeah, thank you. Yeah, I think the, regardless of what you would want to do with the parcel, it's kind of the argument of changing the zoning, kind of going back to what Jimmy mentioned with the previous applicant. You know, this could be perceived as a spot zoning by changing just the one parcel here. Although you're kind of, although it's kind of odd, the zoning is that across the street, it's all light industrial. On your side of the street, there's those parcels that are rural residential.
This is very similar to the one on Church.
In a way, yeah. It's, I mean, if you go a little further up, it's still all rural residential, so there's a little more, it's just the beginning of the rural residential zone.
Yeah, on the other side of Chestnut, on the other side of Chestnut, have that one house there.
I have Route 5 to the west of me. I've got 91 to the east. I'm, you know, I'm in a triangle of streets. It's not residential. I had a difficult time raising my children on the property, because, you know, it's all highway. You have to go someplace. Back when they did the master plan 20-odd years ago, I went to school with Darryl Williams. And I made the mistake of assuming that he would just, you know, blanket all of it with, you know, either, you know, commercial or business. That allows an individual the opportunity, just kind of similar to Route 9 in Hadley. It's a business corridor. And it should be that way. You know, I don't think it would be a problem of getting my neighbor to the south of me or my neighbor over the ramp to the north of me to, you know, get on board with this.
To get on board with changing your zoning or their zoning too?
Their zoning. We're, again, we're really not residential.
Yeah, I know that there was not being a part of the conversation when the zoning maps were discussed. I know that there was a lot of conversation with different parts of 5 and 10 about people saying it is a neighborhood and there are houses here and trying to balance that with the needs and wants to develop and also make that, as you're saying, 5 and 10, more of a corridor there. Any thoughts?
It's at the corner of Chestnut.
Pardon me?
It's just at the corner of Chestnut Street.
Yeah.
Yes, corner of West and Chestnut.
Yep.
I mean, he's got a unique island there. He's, you know, he's got 91 on one side and 5 and 10 on the other. That's why it's another-
I've got almost 500 feet of furniture for just a small dot.
And I guess I would be asking, what zoning are you, would you be asking to, what zoning, I'm sorry, I can't, I can't speak right now. The, in our table of use right now, it's rural residential. What zone are you requesting then?
Well, I, because there are so many different segments of this, I really believe, well, I like the cafe idea, which is allowed with, you know, a couple of hoops to go through. And again, just like the folks previous to me, is daycare, you can have child daycare in my zone, but you can't have adult daycare. So getting to the kennel issue, kennel is you are having animals overnight. Child daycare, it's just child daycare. I'm, I wouldn't be having the overnight. I would be looking for the doggy daycare. But what I would like to do in the, have that voted in as, you know, a special permit, but then have things in the works so that if it didn't work out on down line, you know, six months for now, eight months a year, that property right on Route 5 could be used for anyone who wanted to conduct some kind of a small business, some kind of a storefront type of operation.
Okay, I see, I guess I'm asked, I know that there's other-
Am I looking for business, commercial, or light industrial? I'm not really sure.
And that's kind of what I would ask the board, what they would think would be, would make the most sense, given the neighboring zoning and for the argument.
Well, I think there's like nothing in the, there's nothing in the table of usage that kind of matches up perfectly, that's the problem, right?
With the kennel.
Right.
Yeah, and so there's like, I was doing some research in a lot of, some of the communities, they're treating it as kennel, but then they're also, you know, looking to make it more specific and including making that be kennel and doggy daycare, which also includes doggy daycare and adding those to their table of use, but.
So what I would be looking for right now is a special permit to do doggy daycare. And then, you know, at the town meeting in five, six months from now, just flipping it a bit where, you know, somebody's going on vacation, they could have their pooch there for, you know, overnight, for a week.
Okay, so what you're asking for today wouldn't be to start any of the businesses right now, it would be to change the zoning is what you're asking for.
No, I'm looking right now to put in the cafe.
Okay.
I-
So that would involve-
And again, there's two separate buildings for this. So cafe here, doggy daycare over here.
So you, yeah, you could work with Gerard then about, because with the rural residential zone with the, which is considered the restaurant, if you're saying cafe, with putting together, to get the special permit going for the cafe. And what you're going to be at the next meeting, at the March meeting, it would be the presentation on asking for the zoning change so that at town meeting, they would vote to whether to approve or not potentially a zone change for that parcel, which would then open the door, again, after the fiscal year, to then allow for applications for whatever's now allowed in that zone. Okay, I just want to make sure we're on the same page.
Yeah.
Because the process is a little cumbersome and complicated.
Yes, Gerard.
Yes, Gerard.
Okay. Yes, yes.
So I guess, again, I go ask to the board, any thoughts on what would be the best zone then to be, that should be presented at next, our next meeting with a public hearing on this? What, whether it would be light, I would say maybe light industrial, but I think the light industrial is supposed to be for larger pieces. I need to look more into why.
I'd have to look further into it. I'd have to see what other people are doing, really. I mean, it's because of our usage table, it's strange. It's a strange thing.
Yeah. And like, yeah, some of the commercials, but we would need to know what he's, he needs, we would need to know what he would be asking for and when we put out the public hearing notice and that kind of thing as to what his request is for the zoning. And whether it would be just that parcel or if he could get a parcel to the south as well. And whether it would be just that parcel or if we could get parcel to the south as well and maybe the one to the north, which I think would be a stronger case because otherwise we would be spot zoning, I think, just changing that one parcel.
Dick, I, I.
Sorry, we, our person attending virtually, yeah, Mike, our, we'll just, we let him speak.
I have a question. Would rezoning some of these parcels on West Street without, would that expand our marijuana area that could be retail?
That's a good question. Let me look.
Because I don't think we want retail marijuana shops up and down West Street.
So, yeah, we only are allowed to in town anyway, but none of, we haven't, a lack, nobody's applied for those yet. But yes, Mike, if we change the zoning to business, industrial or light industrial, that would open it to have a dispensary or a treatment center or office or retailer.
Yeah, okay, so. I, I don't know, we, I guess we all have our own personal thoughts on that.
Yeah, no, that's a good, good point to bring up. Yeah, because what we would be considering is just zone change, not of the particular parcel. I, like I said, I think you would need to get personally, at least your neighbor to your south on board with this zone change too.
I, I, I wouldn't have a problem getting Terry on board. The gentleman, you know, we have a 20-foot high, you know, blockade between the two of us to get to the next parcel up on West Street. I really don't think we would be interfering with him at all.
Yeah, Mike?
No, I'm sorry, I interrupted him. Let, let him go.
No.
No, I, I, I was done with that. Does Mike live across the street from me?
No, Mike lives on the corner.
He's a board member.
And Mike lives across the street from Legion on the corner of Prospect.
Oh, 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 okay, okay. I, I thought you were taking calls from other people and, because I've, I've been in a number of Zoom meetings before. Okay. So.
Yeah, Mike, go ahead, yeah.
Wouldn't this, wouldn't this be more than just that neighborhood issue? Wouldn't this be a townwide issue and you have to get the whole town on board with this?
Yes, Mike, this would have to go before town meeting, just, yeah, so.
Not just one neighborhood? No, I understand about the town meeting, certainly. It just seems like it's a bigger, it's a, it's a bigger issue than just one town meeting.
I mean, this is what we just voted on kind of for the last parcel with the Church, Church Avenue area. It's a similar.
I, I, I know.
Yeah. And that's something, again, that we can discuss in the March meeting. This meeting is more to figure out what he would be coming and presenting on. And we would need a strong, you know, case for why it would be helpful to have those two parts. I think it would make sense to have those two parcels requested for a zone change, but it's a matter of what that zone change would be. And the argument has, you know, has to be made to us about that, I think. Any other thoughts from board members on this?
I have nothing. I want to, I want to look into it further.
Yeah, me too.
Who wants doggy daycare in town?
I think it's a good idea. I mean, you've got a nice little recreation center going on there with, with everything that's going on and kind of a, an area of town that's been doing nothing for a long time, so.
Okay.
So while I'm, while I'm asking you guys to think, you know, okay, is, is it commercial? Is it business? Is it light industrial? Let me think about what I could do. I can look at what is allowed in that zoning.
Yep.
And prior, prior to the March 1st meeting, how many days do I have?
We need two weeks ahead of time because we need to publish the notice.
Okay, I.
Further than two weeks. Gerard knows the deadlines, because that more.
Okay, I, I think I could probably come up with something within the next, you know, five or six days and say, okay, this is how I want to go with this.
Right, and then we would also need to consider that as like, is that the best thing for the neighborhood and the town would be our consideration for that.
I gotta say this. Where I am is not a neighborhood.
For sure. No, yeah, I understand what you're saying.
I, Terry's pretty cool, you know, she's got her agricultural landscaping business and, you know, I used to be good friends with Babila Liberdade, who lived on the other side of the, the ramp. I don't know who's there now. It's, we don't talk, we don't see each other.
But what's his face has got some equipment there.
No, 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 he's one more.
Oh, he's one more over?
He's one more, the Hatfield Town Celery. And there's two businesses working out of that.
That's rural residential, so. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, what, what can you get away with? What can you slide through? But it's, it's like myself, you know, I've been a contractor for years. I'm not doing that anymore. So, you know, I don't need a 6,000 square foot building, you know, to have equipment and, you know, excess materials. It's something more low key.
Okay, so I guess, I'm just trying to think, so next steps, you will reach out with your formal request of what you, whether you'd want to look at zoning it, rezoning it business or light industrial? I think those would be the two questions. And you'll get written confirmation from your neighbor that they also would be interested in doing that as well?
Yeah.
And then that, while working with Gerard, we will get that posted in time for the May, March 1st meeting?
Yeah.
Which at that time, you know, similar conversation, but mostly focusing on the rezoning, not necessarily what you want to do there, but mostly like why that zone change would be beneficial for the neighborhood in the area.
Yeah.
And then from there, we would then vote again as a board, whether to recommend, not recommend or remain neutral in the request for the zone change that would then go to town meeting. You would need to get support of the townspeople to support you. I don't, it was two-thirds majority vote. I don't know if that changed to simple majority vote with, under Governor Baker's administration, but you would need to get passage of that. And then, starting in the new fiscal year shortly thereafter, would then allow you to then apply for what I'd imagine would be under the kennel place for that. But in the meantime, if you're interested in going ahead with cafe piece, that's something you can work with Gerard and getting a special working to apply for the permit there, which would be its own separate process of coming before the board and coming with presentations and with to us about what you're planning to do with the plan. And that would be a public hearing with the butters notified.
Right, and so the other thing I also need to consider is if I have a cafe there, I want to continue with the cafe there and so that, what, what the zoning change is, that a cafe is still allowed to continue in, in that zoning.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes, sir.
Address parking. Address parking.
That would be in any sort of special permit application.
Right, right, just, just keep that in mind that you, you would need to, it's one of the things that we consider.
Sure.
So you need to address what you would do for parking. So it's, it's, it's a beginning thinking process for you on how you're going to handle that part of it and in, basically in two different places.
So a restaurant would be allowed in both, both business and in light industrial zones, which makes sense.
So, say that again, please?
Restaurants are allowed in both of those other zones.
Okay, so light industrial or business? Okay, so, yeah, that, that would probably fit and.
The other art way you could approach it too is making the doggy daycare like an accessory use to the restaurant, but I don't think you can do that with the rural residential because that's not allowed. Anyway, that's a different can of worms if we wanted to approach it that way.
Somebody comes up to me and says, here, I'd like my coffee. Hold the leash, please. And, you know, they're gone. I'm like, what do I do? But yeah, we, the, a third of that property, once upon a time, was designated to parking for the riding staple across the street. And we, we never had any problems. I, I, I think my, my curb cut is probably at least three cars wide. And I would be looking to, you know, you know, just change the elevation a little bit, make it easier for people to see on both directions. And, you know, when we had the stable, you know, over 15 years, we never had a single accident there, whether people were coming or going, so. Worked out fairly well. I thank you for your input and I'll, Gerard, I'll be chatting with you in the next, you know, five or six days.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
And we'll see you next month.
Oh, I'll, I'll be, I'll be there March 1st, absolutely. A quick question, are, are the meetings held on the first of every month or?
Uh, the first Wednesday of the month.
First Wednesday of the month?
Right.
Okay, so.
And he'll get in touch with you about time too, because it appears we'll probably have quite a few public hearings on that March meeting, so it could be quite long. So Gerard will be in touch with you about the timing too.
Okay.
All right.
Good deal.
Thank you.
Can I go now?
Yeah, your excuse.
All right, I'm excused.
Thanks for coming.
Have a good night, y'all.
Thank you.
And you.
All right. Thanks for bearing with us. All right. The next piece on the agenda is a discussion, and this is a board conversation about an open meeting law complaint filed by Ron Posh. Sorry, I don't know how to pronounce the last name. And so this is the part where, so we received no meeting law complaint. As the process, process goes, the board must review the complaint, which is what we're doing tonight. And then after we review, we have to reply to the complainant in writing describing the action taken and then, which I'm happy to do. And so this is now the board discussion piece around that complaint. And then the next agenda item we have after that is, is, you know, kind of a follow-up in relation to that complaint too. So first I just want to say, you know, I definitely want to apologize because it's something that we should not have talked about, wasn't on the agenda as chair of the board. I want to go.
Excuse me, Steph?
Yeah.
Steph, should, should the complaint be read into the records to its public knowledge?
I mean, it'll be a part of, yeah, it's in, gonna be, it's in the minute. It'll be attached to everything that we have today.
Okay.
And, yeah, I'll explain, yeah, so this, sorry, Mike. Yeah, but.
No, it's okay.
What I wanted to say is that, yeah, the complaint will be attached to the meeting minutes and be a part of the, the record. I wanted, like I said, say that, take a moment to apologize that we should not have, as chair, I should have stopped any sort of conversation once it progressed because it was not on the agenda and I, you know, take full responsibility as the chair with that. And this is the reason why we have open meeting law is for these types of checks and balances. So I actually really appreciate the complaint that came through because that's kind of what, what it's all about, right? Holding your elected officials accountable and it's something that I should have been more on top of. We, there was a vote that we voted on that, you know, I didn't act on from that last meeting. And I know it's not an excuse, but we're a newer board and hopefully this is a learning experience and a reminder for all of us that, you know, we can't talk about anything that isn't on the agenda. And then along with this, you know, public apology, another action we're taking is we putting this on the agenda, the next item, and we will talk about, to get all of the correct information on the record. And I apologize for any, anything that was considered slanderous or that was incorrect at the time that we spoke to, with, because we didn't know. And I would, are there any other comments from the board that they would like to make?
Just an apology. You know, I was involved and I will apologize also. I think we screwed up.
I have nothing further.
Yeah, I mean, I, I was, I was on that Zoom call, so I was part of it too. So I apologize to the, to the gentleman as well.
All right, and so, yeah, like I said, some part of the actions that we're taking is kind of putting this on the agenda and getting things on the record next. So with that, we can move on to the discussion about 28 Elm Street with Building Commissioner Kyle Scott, if you don't mind coming to the front. Yeah, I'll just take a minute to like lay it out a little bit and then we'll have, hear from Kyle and then we'll see if the board has any questions. So the lot we're talking about is 28 Elm Street. This is a 3.1 acre parcel, has 135 feet of frontage. There's a house up front, then a barn, and then a field in the back. And then there's another house that's being built in the back of the field. Our bylaws is we don't allow two houses on one lot. We do allow accessory dwelling units, but that has its own process and is different than its own dwelling. We don't allow flag lots and you need 200 feet of frontage to build a house on a lot. So that's like, in the history why we're discussing this, this project has come up in fits and starts with the board, really since the groundbreaking last spring, last springish. We have different community members reaching out to us. I know the two former members on the board who are, came off the board in the last year, they had, you know, questions and they had community members asking them. I had a couple of people reach out to me, at least last spring, and I referred them to you, the building inspector and zoning enforcement officer at the time. And then I also reached out just to ask what was going on too. I think that was back in May of last year. And that's when you told me that the, the house, is it going to be a new house in the rear portion? You said you went over deed restrictions from the front older home, so it couldn't be rented or used as single family residential. So basically decommissioning the front home to allow for the home to be built in the back and with the kitchen being removed. And so that's kind of what I shared going forward, when anybody asked me, including current board members. So we have you here tonight, you know, really as institutional memory here because we started, that, the conversations around this product happened long before any of the current members were on the board. And since last meeting, there's been referred, it was back in the end of, end of 2014, beginning of 2015, when this conversation was with the planning board and the planning board ultimately decided to leave it with the building inspector, which is great, but also interesting to note that like if you passed a, some, if we gave a special permit to somebody, I know this is not the case with this parcel in any sort of way, but like the project would have to be done within five years because of different changes and different board members and things like that. So just, it's just funny to think about, you know, why I think it's important to bring it back and talk what, why this decision was made, the history of this on the record just because it's been such a long way ago.
At the time to be a non-planning board issue.
Okay.
And I think if everybody did, was, the reformer pass recording shared with the board and did everyone review them? So it goes back to December of 2014. And then the decision not that it was a non-planning board issue was this January 14 of 2015. And prior to that, conversations were had with the entire planning board on many multiple occasions, including the past chairman, Bob Bartlett, who felt it was a non-planning board issue. Now, the problem I had with your last meeting where this shouldn't have occurred is not one person, with the exception of Lee Bell, after that meeting came to see me. Not one person asked me questions about that, except you by email way back in May. If everybody's so inquisitive about what's going on with a parcel, number one, gentlemen, learn the address.
I knew the address. I've been at that property. They may not have, I've been there.
You didn't say the address, Jim. You didn't say it.
I have been on that property.
I know you have. When these two gentlemen were trying to search on their phone even, nobody could give them the address of that parcel, let alone who owned it. And you kept saying over and over again, there is no frontage. There's no frontage on Elm Street. That is an untruth.
There's 143 feet of frontage, you just said so.
135.
135 feet. So that doesn't qualify in our zoning.
What it means, it's a non-conforming lot. What it means, it's a non-conforming lot. It doesn't mean that it doesn't qualify.
I have a, yeah, I just have a question. Can you explain how, we wouldn't allow like a new dwelling to be built on a lot that doesn't conform to that? So can you explain how just decommissioning the kitchen would then allow for a new lot to be on enough?
Stephanie, what are you talking about? You wouldn't allow anything to be built on non-conforming?
Well, I'm saying like if it doesn't have 200 feet of, I'm just saying if we, there wasn't 200 feet of frontage, would that-
Sure, you can build on non-conforming.
Lots.
Sure you can.
Right, but it would have to be, you're, you would need 200 feet of frontage to build a new dwelling, correct?
Or a non-conforming grandfathered lot.
Right, but wouldn't that be the-
There's already a house on it.
But, hold on, Jimmy, but wouldn't that be the, just the house that you would be able to change, not necessarily building a whole entire new dwelling? Is my, I'm just clarifying, trying to clarify.
No, that's not true. You can also have expansion of a non-conforming use. So the house in question, Judge Paradas' house, I believe it was, would not be considered a dwelling, which this is commonly done in many, many towns throughout Massachusetts, where for some reason you change the use of a house to not being a dwelling unit. Now, the deed restriction, which I pointed out in my email to you back in May, should it taken care of the concerns, could the doctor then make it back into a dwelling unit? Well, not with the deed restriction. So that, that's pretty much a moot point. And could he do it illegally? Well, I mean, with a deed restriction, that's court action and pretty serious on top of that.
Yeah, and that's what, you know, I'm just concerned, you know, legal liability to the town, so that's just-
And we're also being barraged by people who say there's not enough front-
You say that, sir, but I have not had one call.
But we have.
One.
But we have.
My phone number is all over the internet and I get multiple calls for Hatfield Business every single day. I have not had one call asking me about Dr. Posh's house, not one.
We have.
Oh.
And we're the planning board, that's why they come, that's why they come to us.
I suggest you send that my direction then.
Right, and that's just a reminder for the public, if there's, you know, any questions around zoning decisions made or enforcement and it needs to happen, it needs to go toward, to Kyle Scott, not towards the planning board, because we don't have any enforcement or ability to, or accountability, holding people accountable to those things.
I can tell you with other board members, you also said, I don't come to your meetings. I was in these meetings with the planning board often, often. John would come get me. Hey, Bob Bartlett or John, Mr. Wagner wants to see you in there, can you come in? And I always came over. So I'm available to answer questions. The fact that nobody sought me out is the issue here. And it was unprofessional. It was a very, totally, the conduct was unprofessional.
Yeah, to, to address something I did say last meeting, and I'll say again with you here, just as zoning enforcement officer, I feel like there's been just some disrespect to our zoning bylaws and would really-
And how do you mean that, Stephanie? Because that's a big statement.
I, I mean, there's just a lot of discretion and lack of transparency on your end, which has really led, what I believe to be different treatment of different complaints, which, again, I understand it's a tough job to be a bad guy, but ideally our bylaws are being enforced fairly and equitably across the town. And I'm concerned about legal precedent and equity on an equity perspective to the select board. And I know the select board might have a different priority than the planning board, but I mean, hopefully we could be working, you know, together on this and better on this. So that's-
Moving forward, I would certainly hope so.
We would too, but we would like, you haven't been to one meeting that I've been at.
Have I been asked by you, Jim? Did you come in and ask me? You walked by my door.
I walked by your door the other day and it was closed. On Wednesday night of our meeting.
The comments that were made in this last meeting were ridiculous. And that's all I'll say about that, they were ridiculous.
Do you have any questions about the parcel and about this in general?
I, I just want to say one thing. I think that, I think that the whole thing is moot because the planning board did get their bite at this apple. So that whole thing should be, should be done. Since this is in front of us and we're talking about it, my thought is that we have a, we have a non-conforming existing situation over there. And as a planning board, I think it's our job to determine whether or not, if a house is put there, it is any less non-conforming. So I don't think that, I, I think that my opinion on this is moot. I think that going forward though, this kind of thing, if we get a bite at that apple, that's where we get it. So.
And the reason is, Lee, that it wasn't brought forward again, is that permit was issued way back.
Yeah, no, I really don't have, I really don't have an issue with that, with, with it. I just, going forward, I, I want, I want to have that same opportunity to take a look at it.
And you would have had it this time, except it was-
Yeah, no, and reviewing the thing, they did get their opportunity.
Yeah.
Yeah, it just took a, 2014 to now is a long, almost 10 years.
I just, I guess, I guess I just don't want it, I, I guess that now that we're putting it on the record, I just don't want there to be a situation where people can come to us and say, hey, look, this happened here, we should just automatically get a, get a-
Every, every case of zoning is unique.
Yeah, okay. As long as we, as long as we can, as long as we can appreciate that. And I, and I also think that, I think that Kyle, I think that Kyle touched on a point too. I think that communication is the key here amongst, amongst all of us.
Yeah.
I think that's the lesson to be, to be learned on, in this moment.
I think your camera person, when this meeting's done and you ask John, I was to meetings all the time. I would come in, it was very informal. Paul Labby, great, Paul Dostal, all the older members. And it was like walking into a group of friends. It wasn't adversarial. This has become adversarial. And a lot of it is due to the name-calling, the accusations made against people. It's not a place that the planning board should be on. It should be a welcoming board to offer your services to anybody that wants to know something. And if you have a zoning question and you don't like getting them, you send them to me.
Any further discussion on the 28 Elm Street? Mike, are you good?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, can I ask Kyle? What, what did, um, I, I don't really understand the re, the thought of this wasn't a planning board issue and everyone agreed with Bob Bartlett and, but that's not a reason. Was there a reason of why, why he felt, and he convinced his board that it wasn't planning board issue?
It wasn't only him, Mike. It was Bob Wagner also, after Bob Bartlett. Bob Wagner also felt, due to the fact that there was a deed restriction filed, that it was a decommissioned residence and not to be used as a residence again, it took out the question of it not being allowed and let it be allowed because of that reason.
Okay, okay. I, so that, that's the reason.
That's correct.
Right.
And you, you of any of these current members, Mike, certainly know, you can pick up the phone and 90% of the time I answer it.
Yeah, no, it's, it's not a question of that.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, again, that's kind of why we wanted you to be here to just explain that again, because again, it was like eight, nine years ago. So just coming forth and, because the perception, you know, people drive by and see the house, like there's questions, right? So I think it's a good timing to get, get on the record to show that this is something that has a history and wasn't taken lightly back then either, so.
All right.
All right. Thank you for your time.
Anything else, sir?
Thank you. Thank you, Kyle.
Thanks.
All right. The next item on our agenda is about hiring our part-time planner. With Marlene reached out, she's finally put together the job description or, and is ready to put out the job description for the part-time planner. This is something that is, she wanted just to confirm that if we think that the 10 hours a week, see, it seems-
10 hours a week?
Or, I'm sorry.
A month?
10 hours, forget.
Or a year?
Nope. It was five hours a week or 20 hours a month, how we would want that listed on the description. And I would say probably, probably it'd be more, better to, more better. It'd probably be better to do it on a monthly cadence rather than a weekly cadence, because I can see some weeks or months might need, need more effort than, I don't know. She wanted us to look and make sure that we approved that and then approved of the job description that we sent around. I know it's not a part of our minutes, I noticed, or a part of our packet, but it was something that was sent out shortly after our last meeting. I don't know if you remember reading that.
I'm ashamed to say I didn't.
Because once we can, once we approve that, then she can work on posting that and getting that role filled, which is exciting.
Well, I would defer to her anyway, so.
Right. She just wanted from a procedural perspective for us to lessen approval.
Well, then if, if that's what we need, then I'm, I'm fine with that. I, I have every faith in her.
I make a motion, we approve Marlene's distribution of, uh, job description for the new, for a planning board, a planning member, part-time.
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
Great, thanks, Mike. Passes and hopefully she can get that posted. Related to the budget and salary conversation, we have, we as in the, I have, I, you're all welcome, but, uh, meeting with the joint, meeting with the finance committee and select board the end of this month, I forget which day, the 23rd maybe, to just go over our budget request. But since it's the same as last year, I'm sure the last question's about have we used the part-time planner funds? And I'll have, hopefully I'm Marlene also there to be like, I'm working with them, so. But it should be hopefully a cut and dry conversation with them about that. And now time to approve the minutes.
Steph?
Yeah, Mike?
We, we didn't put in for a bump in salaries for ourselves, right?
That's not our decision to make. I think that's a belief, a conversation that happens outside of us. But we did get the COLA increase, I believe that happened last year.
I was going to ask you that, but, okay, so I guess the process has changed since I was doing it.
Yeah, I don't, at least, I mean, maybe we could have asked our own, but I'm not inclined to ask for a bump over maybe other things that we could be asking for right now.
Yeah, no, that's, I just want, I just wanted to know if we had asked or not, and I wondered about the COLA. So, okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, ma, like I said, maybe we could ask. I'm inclined to try to like ask for the same thing every year, or, you know, and when we do ask for more money, like we go, go in towards the planner, so. And it took us three asks, three asks, three years of asking for us to get that request, so.
Well, I know Sean's always happy when we don't ask for anything more.
Yes, exactly. All right, time to approve the minutes. I, I know that these aren't in the packet, but I did review them and they looked good to me. I don't know if anyone-
I didn't see them.
I, I looked through them briefly and everything looked well planned.
Yep.
And well-written.
This is what, last week's minute, last month?
Yep.
Yeah, I looked at them briefly. I didn't read, I didn't really read them that well.
Do we have a motion then to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
Minutes from the January 3rd, 4th?
January 4th.
January 4th meeting has been approved. All right, our next scheduled meeting is Wednesday, March 1st. It looks like we'll have three public hearings happening then, one for the hotel on 5 and 10. We have gotten those materials in, so that one's definitely happening. And then the two informal conversations we had today, those potentially, pending they hit all their deadlines, get to the March 1st meeting. I would say if they don't hit those March 1st, the deadlines to get all this materials in before to have a meeting, the hearing on March 1st, it might be difficult for us to continue to keep it on the town meeting warrant agenda as it then will get very close to, to town meeting.
When do we have to have that by?
The sooner the better is what I'm, is what I'm told. But I feel like it's mid-April at the latest. So we could go into April, but it wouldn't be-
We'll be pushing it.
Yeah.
Well, hopefully the people come back next month.
Right, and if they don't, yeah. Anything else otherwise?
I just have a question.
Yes, Mike?
Who's up this year for reelection or election?
I think it's John.
I'm supposed to answer the question they asked me.
Yeah, John has to decide whether he wants to-
Okay.
Run, stay on or run for reelection or not. Hopefully, we appreciated your perspective, John, so hopefully you think, thinking about it.
You're not going to make us beg, are you?
I don't know, about the campaigning process.
Oh, okay, I'll hold, I'll hold your sign.
Sign. Kissing babies, I don't know.
All right, with that, could I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, meeting of February 1st, February 1st, 2023 is adjourned at 7:08 PM.